All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 16, 2023, meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti with us tonight.
Tom Parenti.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack DeMergen, zoning administrator.
Okay, great. Everybody's here tonight. It's been this is the first time in a couple of weeks, you know, a couple of meetings. All right, let's get started right away with our agenda. First item, review of the minutes from the April 18, 2023 meeting.
I just have one comment on page two, fourth paragraph from the bottom. Second and last line, I think the word is, wants to be, are.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Anybody else? I wasn't here for the meeting, so. Okay, anybody prepared to move acceptance of the minutes?
Yeah. Anybody else have any changes? No? I'll move that we accept the minutes of the April 18, 2023 meeting as amended.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstain. All right, next item on our agenda is old business. Anybody have anything they'd like to bring up under that topic? Jack, we talked about amendments to 383-121C, the outdoor display and storage. I know we have an application on that.
Tonight.
Tonight, but sometime thereafter, we want to look at tightening up those regulations a bit.
Sure, maybe within the next couple of meetings, put it under new business and we can go over that, or are you looking for specific language to be brought in?
I think I worked on some specific language.
I know we had some discussion about tenant sizes.
Yeah. Why don't I dust that off?
Yep.
Fix it up and we'll put it on the agenda for the next, as an agenda item.
Sure, we'll do it under new business.
So that we don't lose track of it.
Got it.
Yeah, maybe a separate item under, you know.
Got you.
That's obviously got nothing to do with the application we have going on tonight. Anything else under old business? Okay, how about under new business? All right, Dan.
Getting good reviews on the new one, the new facility that opened up right next to Maplewood? Maple, whatever it's called?
The Vero.
Yeah, Vero.
Yeah, yep. That's good. Good, good.
Yeah. Is there a timeframe on the completion of the assisted living facility on Smith Farms?
I think both, that 329 Smith Farm and the Firelight Plaza is targeting the end of summer. Whether or not that'll happen is yet to be seen.
What about the project, as long as around the subject, on the Post Road?
Oh, the medical building?
The medical building.
Yeah, they're moving along. I don't have an end date target for them yet, but they're pedal to the metal over there as well.
All right, so nothing under, nothing under new business. Jack, you want to give your report?
The only thing I have is, within the next couple of meetings, like Ozzy said, we're going to bring up some language for outdoor displays. We have a text amendment application that we will hear at our next meeting, so you will get your information regarding that within the next couple of weeks. Other than that, I don't have too much, you know, a lot of residential applications coming in with the nice weather, and other than that, I would say business as usual.
All right, anything for, any questions for Jack?
Just one, and please handle this as quickly as possible, because I think it's a lot issue. We had the issue with that surveyor, Adam Hoffmann. How would we, what can we do to prevent that from happening? Is there anything we can do to prevent that from happening again?
We, yeah, I mean, we could definitely pay, you know, closer attention to it and make sure that something like that is not, you know.
How would we know? Because this was my issue before.
It's difficult in a lot of ways.
I mean, the guy did a good job, relatively speaking.
It is, and, you know, I don't want to go too, too deep into it, but, you know, it's just something we'll have to pay attention for in the future and, you know, go over as it gets distributed to department heads, you know, make sure we're all looking out for that.
I will say, we, years ago, always had to put a live seal on drawings. I can't remember the last time we did. Everything's electronic.
Right.
So it is difficult.
And that's the issue.
All right, Dan. Then I guess we could proceed right away to our public hearings. We have three of them this evening. First one is the application for special exemption permit or use submitted by OSJ of Orange Post LLC. This is for 53 Boston Post Road, and it's to permit an outdoor display slash storage area. Have we, we haven't read the.
Legal notice.
Legal notice. Do you have that, Paul? Can you do that for us?
To appear one time on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, and one time on Wednesday, May 10, 2023, the Orange TPZC. Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, May 16, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. A petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted upon the initiative of the Orange Plan and Zone Zoning Commission to amend section 383-26 of the Orange zoning regulations to regulate solar and other renewable energy structures on the residential, in the residential zone. An application for special exemption permit or use submitted by the OSJ of Orange Post LLC for property known as 53 Boston Post Road to permit outdoor storage, display slash storage area. Copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department dated in Orange, Connecticut, the second day of May 2023.
All right, so, oh, the legal notice has been read for all of them?
Only for two. There will be a separate legal notice for our second matter.
Yes, good enough. Is the applicant here?
Good evening. So for the record, my name is Megan Miles. I am a, you guys hear me? Okay. I'm a land use attorney at Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy, office at 195 Church Street in New Haven. I will keep my presentation brief, but I actually have two handouts for you guys to help guide the presentation. There is, just hand those down. One, two, three, four. And then also, we received, in connection with filing, a couple of comments from the fire marshal, so I do have a revised plan that incorporates the fire marshal's comments. So I'll hand this to you as well. Two for you. And there's a smaller version as the last page of the other handout I gave you guys. One, two, three, four. Go. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yep. So I, I'll make a brief presentation. I, I'm going to be the only one presenting, but I want to note that I have my full team here. Should you have any specific questions, my colleague from Carmody, Dan Chapel, and then also from the applicant's team at Ocean State Job Lot, we have Evan Portnoe, who is the director of store development, and Susan, Sue Lamparelli, who is the district team leader and is very familiar with the Orange store in particular. So we were here recently for a text amendment, but this is a new application and a new record, so I might be repeating myself from things you're familiar with from last month, but as I said, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, which is OSJ of Orange Post LLC, and they own property in Orange at 53 Boston Post Road. So on the first page of the handout I gave you guys is an aerial. This is, this is just from Google, but I've roughly outlined the parcel for your reference. It is a little over six acres. It is zoned C2, so one of the commercial zones, and it is improved with a retail building that is a little over 58,000 square feet, and it has two tenant spaces. One is approximately 12,500 square feet, and that has the PetSmart, and then the other is a little over 45,000 square feet, and that is formerly a Best Buy, and hopefully, as of Thursday, will be the grand opening for Ocean State Job Lot. So they got their CEO and are targeting opening on Thursday. So that'll be nice. And just looking at this aerial, you can tell that the surrounding area is predominantly commercial, especially retail. So right next to Target, I believe there's a car wash, fitness center, banks, McDonald's, Chuck E. Cheese. So that's really the surrounding area here for the property. So as I mentioned, the Target opening for Ocean State Job Lot is this Thursday. Ocean State Job Lot is a retailer of a lot of different items at really competitive prices, so particularly household goods, clothing, electronics, and their inventory tends to change seasonally to match seasonal consumer demand. And they're currently, or they have been in Orange for the past 13 years at a different site on the Post Road at 401 Boston Post Road. So the application tonight, a very limited issue, it's a special permit approval to permit limited outdoor display and storage at the new store here at 53 Boston Post Road. So specifically requested is 26 square feet of general outdoor display and storage. It's specifically identified for propane, and then 185 square feet of outdoor display and storage of seasonal items, all on the sidewalk, and this is pursuant to the newly amended regulation, 383-121C1. So page two of the handout is the plan sheet as filed. It shows the, just the various dimensions of the proposed outdoor display in relation to the building entrance. So on the right-hand side, we have the proposed propane tank area, and it is surrounded with proposed concrete barriers to protect the area, and then also is proposed 185 square feet to the left of the entrance doors, and that's for the storage and display of seasonal items. So seasonal items, and an effort to define it in the spring and summer as things typically like potted plants, hanging plants, and residential landscaping supplies like bagged mulch, bagged soil, crushed stone, that sort of thing, and then in the fall, it's other seasonal items like pumpkins, and the flowers are usually mums, and in the winter, it'd be things like wreaths or decorations. So the height of the racks is anticipated to be between seven and 7.8 feet. They usually work with a specific vendor, so they can regulate the height pretty easily. And so the next item, the next, I'm sorry, the next sheet in the handout shows the.
Excuse me, Attorney Miles?
Yes, of course.
Just that nine-foot dimension?
Nine-foot dimension.
Is that intended to?
Oh, yes, yes. That.
Is that intended to indicate?
It's a handicap.
Oh, taper? Because I thought, I thought somewhere in the paperwork, a six-foot clear width was required.
On the sidewalk, that's correct. So if you, no, if you skip to, skip two pages in the package to the photos, so that exhibits the sidewalk a lot better.
Oh, you're right. You're right, Kevin. That is, that is all the taper.
So it is nine feet clear, yeah. So there will be, I think required is at least six feet, so there'll be nine feet clearance as depicted. And you can tell the ballards are existing there. This is also from Google. I have to.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So you allow me to jump ahead. So there is six-foot pedestrian circulation. It does not block pedestrian access, and it's far removed from vehicle circulation on the site. It's anticipated that the seasonal display would be from March to December, so usually through the holidays, so beginning early spring and then through the holidays. This type of proposal is very characteristic for larger retailers along the shoreline, which are well-known for this type of outdoor display, and just to flip back a page that depicts the full, the scale of the full retail space to the actual outdoor storage, you can tell that it's a really minimal scale compared to the full context of the retail store. And then we, I believe we also included in this handout just some general photos of the display, and usually what it looks like, I mean, fortunately with Ocean State Job Lot is, this isn't their first rodeo with this, they have this type of outdoor display at a number of their stores throughout Connecticut, so these are sample photos from other, other sites. So skipping ahead to that.
You said these are from other sites, right?
Yes, I believe all of them are, to the best of my recollection, yes. So then, to address the revised plan that I submitted, and this is also the very last page in the package, during filing, we did receive some comments from the fire marshal. He noted that the pallets, pallets, not pallets, pallets, to the farthest left hand actually blocked a fire department sprinkler connection and a Knox box, which my understanding is what they use to access a special key, so they don't have to, like, bust down the door. So he asked that the pallets not block that area and that they be moved elsewhere. So we've submitted a revised, revised plan that actually just removes those two pallets from the plans. They're not there, but we're not reducing the square footage asked so that there is some flexibility in location seasonally as there's outdoor storage, but just the understanding that under no circumstances can it block that area of the building in response to the fire marshal comments, and that's no problem.
You're talking about where it says eight, eight feet, zero inches?
Exactly, exactly. So initially, if you don't mind.
Initially, it was 16 feet, so they could, they cut that in half.
16, extending to what?
To the left, correct.
Exactly, so the fire.
Oh, fire riser, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so the fire, fire marshal asked that be moved.
So, so the display area and the areas and storage areas are where that eight-foot section is, where the flower racks are depicted. For 30 feet by 4.8, or 4, 4 feet, 8 inches, is that?
I think it's 4, 0, just.
Okay, whatever, but.
Yeah, yeah, it's a zero.
And, and where it says 32 feet by 11 inches, that's, that's not as.
That's not, no, I think, so it just where it says Blue Rhino.
Just where it says Blue Rhino.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's depicting the distance from the door entrance.
All right, so that's 11 feet, and I can't read that.
By 2 and a, 2, 5.
So we can, we can rely on, on, on the fact that this outdoor storage will always be in this location, you know?
So what Ocean State Job Lot is hoping, so when they filed, where the eight feet is there on the, the left-hand side, there was an additional eight foot by four depicted that the fire marshal asked be moved. So Ocean State Job Lot would still like to have the right for that outdoor storage and square footage. They just, as they open and start deciding operationally where they put things, I think they wanted a little flexibility in putting that somewhere else in front of the store, just making sure it didn't block the fire marshals.
As long as it doesn't block that particular part.
Exactly, and that's no problem.
So they're going to have the same amount. They didn't want to short themselves with the amount of these.
Exactly, exactly, and I think realistically, it's going to go on the other side of the Blue Rhino.
Right next to the propane?
Well, outside the concrete barriers, but yes.
No, just kidding.
I think that's realistically where they're looking at, just so that they don't get in the way of the doorway.
All right, is it, is it reasonable to expect that we get a, you know, a new plan when that happens? I mean, it doesn't need to go to a hearing, but.
No, if, we could make it a condition that once that is decided, we get a plan showing that new.
And we update.
Yeah.
We can keep the zoning enforcement officer in the loop.
Yeah.
That's no problem.
I'll put that as a condition if they were to receive approval.
I imagine you'd want that from us anyway, you know, it's not depicted now, but, you know, you want to reserve the right to.
Exactly. So just to, I guess, wrap up my presentation, this is in the application materials, but we listed how the proposal complies with each subsection requirement of 383-121C. I also note that in connection with Orange's various special permit findings, that this application also satisfies each one. The, for intensity of the use, it's a very small scale and intensity. We have a six-acre lot, a 58,000-square-foot building with only 211 square feet of outdoor storage, so it's a very, of outdoor display and storage. So it's a very modest request in context to the large site, the large building. It complies with all of the stringent, stringent requirements of Orange's outdoor storage regulations. I know that you actually, it sounds like you're going to be revisiting soon, but it complies with the existing ones.
Just so that we could better understand what the regulation says.
So to our best effort to interpret them, we believe they comply fully. And when you recently modified the text, you found that limited regulated outdoor storage and display is appropriate in C2 zones in accordance with the POCD, because it really supports commercial development and supports enhancement of Route 1. It's kind of nice when you have flowers outside the big box stores on Route 1. It adds a little variety to the scale, so that's nice. There's no, there's no impacts on traffic, topography, parking, water supply, sewage, like all the other lists that are concerns for special permit review just aren't triggered here. And then for fire and police protection, fire marshal provided comments, police department provided comments, and they've been incorporated as appropriate.
Megan, will the items be out overnight?
Yes, yes. And I, I think that's it for my presentation, of course, here for more questions, but, yeah, sensitive to everyone else's time here in the audience.
Megan referred to Schedule C. I don't know if you all had a chance to take a look at that. Schedule C on the, on the application, or actually, it's attached to the proper description. Schedule A.
Oh, yes.
It's one complete. Schedule A, Schedule B is a narrative, and Schedule C sort of walks you through the regulation and demonstrates compliance with the regulation in every aspect. See what I'm looking for? Yeah, I had no question on any of that. I just, it was helpful to have it laid out that way.
Jack, are the fire marshal's comments attached to any place?
They are on the original, yes. His only comment was that, that separate, or that other half of the display not cover the Knox box.
Okay, so he didn't make a comment about accessibility to the entrance or exit vest of Yule's?
That was his only comment.
Okay.
It was, it was in connection with the sign-off on the application form. That's where he made it.
All right.
So he made the comment and then signed off on it.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for all your time on this. Sincerely appreciated.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on the application? Okay. All right, then I, absent any other questions, I guess we can move to close the public hearing. We, we have any sign, all sign-offs that we.
We do.
We require?
Yes, sir.
Move to close the public hearing.
I didn't mean to rush anybody on that, I just.
No, I don't care.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to close the public hearing on this matter. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. All right. Public hearing is closed. Who wants to start us off here?
It's, I'm sorry. It's exactly the kind of thing that we were talking about, I think it was a month ago. It comports with the statute and the regu, the regulation, I should say. It's well-thought-out, it's got plenty of circulation room, protection for the outdoor display of the propane, pretty much what you'd expect from a large retailer like this.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I don't see that in any way it doesn't comply with the regulation, and as I said in that Schedule C, part of the application, the applicant has walked us through the requirements of the REG and, you know, has commented on their compliance, so. I don't see anything to hold us back from approving it. Judy, you have anything?
No, I think it's, it supports retail, it helps the business, that's good for the town. They've been here many years, they have a nice operation.
Yeah.
And I think it's great that they can expand.
Good. Kevin?
Yeah, the POCD, you know, you know, guides us to try and reuse existing buildings and put them back on service.
Promote, promote economy on the Post Road.
Any visual impact from the outdoor display area is going to be confined to the customers coming to this location, because it's so far set back from anyone that's casual observance. You have to be going there to see it, so.
So I don't think, and I don't think as a special permit application, there's nothing here that gives me cause for concern, that it's not harmonious with what's going on in the neighborhood, that it's going to be generating traffic of any kind, or, you know, putting, putting into question the health, safety, and welfare of, of any shoppers. So, anything else?
No.
All right, Dan, let's, let's, a motion to, I assume, a motion to approve the application?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the application for special exemption permit or use submitted by OSJ of Orange Post LLC for property known as 53 Boston Post Road to permit an outdoor display storage area.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. Do we have a second?
Second. Do we have to make a finding for the special permit?
You could make a finding that everything listed in the applicant's.
Schedule C.
Schedule C, statement of findings.
That's what I was going to suggest, was that we just, you know, adopt those, adopt those as our findings.
Yep.
And adopt Kevin's comments as the compliance with the, you know, plan of conservation development and, you know, other, other comments I just made regarding, you know, compliance with special permit requirements. And we want that one changed.
We do, yes. When they put in or choose the location for that additional storage, we'll get a map showing that update.
So I assume Judy's motion is going to incorporate all that?
All of it.
There you go. I'll second the new, new and approved motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the application. It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye, and none opposed. All right, very good. Thank you. All right.
My, I'm going to approve so many because that goes backwards. I'm going to be talking to you. I was looking for 121.
Let me take out, let me take out my voluminous. All right. Next item on our agenda, item number six, is the application for site plan review submitted by ABF Freight System, Inc. This is also known, you know, for property known as 62 Carlson Road. It includes, or we're also considering an application for temporary special use, earth materials removal and filling. And that's the reason why this is on our public hearing.
That's correct.
On for public hearing, because that requires a special use permit. The site plan doesn't, does not. So Paul, do you want to start us off with the legal notice? So Paul, do you wanna start us off with the legal notice, please?
To appear one time on Thursday, May 4th, 2023, and one time on May 11th, 2023, the Orange Town T P Z C Notice of Public Hearing. Notice hereby given that on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. Application for Site Plan Review submitted by A B F Freight System, Inc. for property known as 62 Carlson Road to improve the current developed site to operate a trucking business as, I'm sorry, an application for temporary special use, earth materials removal and filling has been submitted in conjunction with this application. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department dated in Orange, Connecticut, this third day of May 2023.
All right, very good. Thank you. Has the applicant prepared or received?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Brian Baker with Silver One, licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut, offices in Woodbury. We prepared the plans and the survey for the applicant, A B F Freight. I also do have Diane Allard from A B F Freight here if there are any operational questions that come up, and Eric Maria from Claris Construction. They're the architect and the construction manager.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name again? I didn't get it.
Brian Baker.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. So the first map I have in front of you is the existing condition survey currently.
Oh, yeah, you know, Brian, if you wanna use the windowsill, it's sort of a better angle for everyone. Sorry to undo all your hard work over there.
I know where you're at. You added the molding since I was here last. Genius. This is in your plan set. This is the existing condition survey we prepared. Currently, A B F Freight Trucking and Logistics Company operates out of 56 Carlson Road. They do not own the property. They lease it. They're actually purchased and now own 62 Carlson Road immediately next door. Slightly larger parcel, slightly larger building. There's another existing building here that's gonna be taken down, which I'll show you. This site sits about 20 feet higher in elevation than the 62 Carlson site. 62 Carlson is almost entirely impervious, gravel, asphalt. There are, these are all loading docks already, so historically it was used at some point as a trucking facility, which is allowed in the L I one district, which is what we're proposing. So our improvements are gonna be all in this lower area. The site drains generally from northwest to southeast into a drainage system that runs along the back of both properties and down into West Haven.
Is the applicant operating on 62, just 56?
Just 56.
Not on the parcel?
No, they've purchased it but have made no improvements as of yet. The tenant before they purchased it was like a large-scale utility companies installing utility poles, so they had a bunch of trucks in there, but they're, they're gone and then we're gonna be, you know, hopefully, breaking ground and doing the construction here so they could move in, in the fall, move the operations from up above to down below.
And the way I read it, nothing in your site plan contemplates using these parcels together?
No. There was an original, originally, there was a concept of, they had an agreement, tentative agreement to purchase 56 also, but that fell through, didn't make sense economically, so.
So it remained, it'll remain?
It'll remain under the current ownership and they'll find a new tenant theoretically or sell the property. So, yeah, it is not, there are no improvements proposed on 56 and we will just be moving from 56 to 62. As I mentioned, it's in the L I one district, adjacent uses in Orange are commercial and industrial. We have an Amazon trucking terminal to the northwest, the Burlington Coat Store to the north, and then the Shop Right and Dollar Tree Store to the south. This is a town line with West Haven, the back property line, so these are residential uses down below in West Haven. As I mentioned, the drainage goes down through a drainage easement, which is in the, in favor of the town of West Haven and down into West Haven. And I'll go through, we've had some negotiations back and forth and finally get, one of Bob Britton's initial comments was get West Haven Engineering sign off because that's who's ultimately the water's going to, and we've done all that, and I'll show you what we've, how we've done that.
I'll show you here. So the use, this is a permitted use under freight and materials, trucking businesses, and warehousing and wholesale businesses, is that?
Correct.
So this is the grading and drainage plant, so this'll show you what's going to happen. As I mentioned, the building in the, it's a 10,000 square foot building in this northwest corner that'll be taken down. This is the existing building, which is gonna remain. They're gonna make upgrades to the building. It's a little bit dilapidated in the loading dock area, so they're making improvements as well as renovate the existing offices. As part of Phase One, there is no proposed expansion. They are contemplating a future loading dock addition as part of Phase Two, so we've included that on this application. When the construction is initially completed, that will just be additional paved area. We actually have, as I showed you before, once the entire site was impervious, with the proposed improvements, we're actually reducing the impervious surface by about 17,860 square feet. And we wanted to make sure that with this drainage system, we were decreasing flows, two things, decreasing flows to the proposed drainage system going to West Haven, and number two is part of the M S four stormwater permit, which Orange is under and West Haven is under. Any redevelopment process, project, you know, so not only new development, any redevelopment project has to retain the first inch of runoff on the site, so we have these two large beds of underground concrete infiltration chambers. They're five foot tall, and those will be retaining that first inch of runoff as well as decreasing the flows into the West Haven system. Additionally, we're also giving West Haven a access and easement and putting, there's a fence around the property, so this is a separate property in West Haven that basically is entirely fenced and there's no access to it, so West Haven has no way to get to their catch basins and piping in that area, so we're gonna be putting in a gate for them and providing a drainage easement so they can get to these catch basins and pipes if they ever need to maintain them in the future. Again, as part of the project, we are also doing some landscaping and lighting. None of which, none of which currently exists on the site as far as the landscaping goes. So one of the first early meetings we had on a pre-app basis with Jack, he asked if there was a way to, we could provide some evergreen buffering to the neighbors down below. Note that we aren't, we aren't changing this curb line or edge of pavement, so that, we're not encroaching any closer to the property line than it already exists, but we are gonna put in an entire row of green giant arborvitae and Norway spruce in that area. And additionally, on these landscaped islands, we have shade trees and shrubs throughout. We have a lighting plant we've provided, and that, we've also done a photometric study. You also received a revised one because we had shown some minor light spillage over to the properties to the south. We revised that to show that there's no, no light spillage off of the, for the proposed lighting off-site.
I was gonna ask about that because we had one plan in the package.
It didn't go to the property line, so I.
It didn't comply, but then one that does, as far as I could see.
Yeah, the first analysis, the lighting vendor cut off the analysis at the parking area, but did not extend it back to the property line, which is sort of the critical part, right? That's what you wanna see, so.
What's in this package doesn't comply.
Correct. The singular, less bulky.
This piece.
One is the correction.
Right. So, as I mentioned, it was February we had submitted originally, or we went to get Bob Britton's sign off. He said, make sure you get the West Haven Engineer's sign off so between February and now. While we were negotiating, going back and forth with drainage, and they, West Haven has submitted an email to Bob and us saying that they're happy with the drainage design now. Bob's comments have all been satisfied. We received the police commissioner's sign off as well as all the other required sign offs for the application, so that we have all our ducks in a row before we came before you.
That's the correct one. There's one that's submitted. That, that one in your hand is the corrected one.
This is the one in the package?
No, the one in the big package was the incomplete one. This one that you're holding is the revised.
Sure, because this is in the package.
No, no, no. When he says the package, he means this.
Yeah, the staple, yeah, I'm sorry.
There's one in here.
Everything's in your.
One here that doesn't comply. The lighting plant doesn't comply, but then in that separate piece, it does.
The one in your hand is the corrected version.
Yeah, rather than print, rather than print 14 new sheets.
No, you're fine.
We've got you the two, and then they'll be, they'll be rolled into the complete set, subject to any other, any other comments. So, yeah, in summary, we're redeveloping an existing site that was a trucking facility. It's gonna be a trucking facility, simply moving next door. You can see, it gives them more room and flexibility. Currently, where they are, 56, the loading docks are only on this southern side of the building, and they have a little more limited tractor, tractor, tractor storage area. Now they'll have access around all sides of the building, loading docks on both sides, and more area to park their vehicles. And again, what's that? Brian.
Brian, sorry. Brian, I saw something about 19 truckloads is the current volume?
Right, typically.
And what's the proposed for the new place?
They honest expect it to be similar because it's just gonna be more efficient operations. They have more area to store trailers now, but they still expect, it's approximately 19 tractor trailers arrivals and 19 departures, and they mostly take place Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to, or excuse me, 8:00 to 10:00 AM and 5:00 to 7:00 PM.
And they expect that to continue or something?
Yeah, yeah.
There's basically, Carlson Road is basically a dead end, right?
Correct. Yeah, just at past 56, yep.
Right.
Well, it dead ends into the old, it used to be Lowe's, right?
Right.
I don't know if they cul-de-sac'd it.
No, it's still, it is still open.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can't drive through, though.
They don't, they don't want through traffic. Amazon at one point was going to bring in a plan to close that off and have it be a dead-end roundabout. We never really heard bad from them after initial discussion, so it still is open to people cutting through, but I think they have a one-lane block off there, and they direct people the other way.
They do have a one-lane.
You can, last I was there, you can get through still, and we told them they can't block it off.
I did, just to turn around.
Right. They initially blocked it off, but didn't get permission from the town. That was not part of their submittal, so we told them they have to keep that open and come in with a plan if they wanted to block that off.
They had security there at one point.
They did, for, I think, right when they opened, and then we told them, you know, if you wanna do that, you need to come back in and get it approved, and we never heard from them.
But that doesn't affect.
No, all, all our traffic currently goes out to Bill Hill Lane and will continue to. We just, we just made our truck traffic about 400 yards shorter, trips, that's all, by moving down the hill. Save a little gas.
Yeah. Now, in, so we are approving a site plan, and if, for the existing building, and if you're gonna build the expansion, you're coming back?
No, we have provided everything, all the documentation for Phase Two, including, including the architecturals. We just note that it's not gonna be built right now, but we are looking for approval of the Phase Two addition. The building is shown, we've provided the architecturals.
So your stormwater management is for the complete site?
Correct, correct.
And a fully built-out site?
Correct.
And your traffic study is for a fully built-out site projecting the trucks for the Phase Two addition?
There's no traffic study?
No.
Uh, what's, oh, so it's the stormwater, sorry. Gotcha.
The, you know, if, if we were to approve the site plan, it, that approval is good for two years or five years?
I thought it was five, but then we're.
I believe it's five now. They recently just changed it.
Right.
The yes.
All right, so, I mean, I think it's their intention to have approval for the entire project you see on the site plan.
And should we not choose to build in five years, then we'd have to come back for, for a new approval, because it wasn't constructed, yeah.
Right, and, and since we're bringing this up to current water quality standards compared to what's already getting dumped out of 50, whatever, Carlson, 56, how do you handle, you know, all of the grease and oils out of the, these trucks that are gonna be?
So they're at each catch basin that has a, that goes into the, into the units, so there's, there are four catch basins that actually will tie into the underground units. Those all will have deep sumps, deep sumps and hooded outlets to prevent oil from, oil or floatables from entering into the system, and then they'll have to, they also have to be pumped out every, every year. That's part of a maintenance, stormwater maintenance plan that I've included on the last page of the plans, which is typical of all your new site plans now, and I don't know, Jack, if you get copies of those when someone's supposed to do their stormwater maintenance, but we stipulated in there that we would send you a copy of the, of the maintenance after it was completed. And basically, for a system like this, it's pumping out the catch basins annually, sweeping up the parking area, and inspecting these underground units to make sure there's no sediment buildup. We don't expect any.
We typically ask for a maintenance schedule.
Yeah, so that has been, has been included.
That's included on the construction plan.
It usually is.
It's on the last sheet.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to, I forgot to address the special permit part of this, why we're here for excavation. The site currently is, is actually poorly graded or improperly graded where the water flows right now from northwest right to the front of the building, so it ponds in front of the loading docks, and they actually retrofitted some piping that let the water go through the building and out the other side. So to properly drain it, we have to cut, excavate a little bit on this, this side to get that water to pitch out to the catch basins, and then also for these underground units, we have to take out the material where those underground detention units are gonna be. And since it's such a large site, you know, did quick math, even six inches of cut over an area of this size is 4,000 cubic yards of material, so, you know, we are gonna be between the regrading and the installation of the storm drainage, we're gonna be exporting about 4,500 yards of, of material. The material that we can, we're gonna strip off, obviously, the broken asphalt and, and some of that material up top will go offsite. Processed gravel that's underneath it, that's compacted, we'll stockpile and reuse, and then some, it will be hopefully subsoil material that will, will come off. So we reuse as much as we can on site. We don't wanna bring any other processed material on, but there is, does have to be material removed for no other reason than to get the, the site. Right now, you go out there, it's so, like I said, pitched towards the building and dead flat, that there's just been puddling forever, and which leads to frozen, freezing conditions, which leads to broken asphalt, which leads to them adding more patches, so this is gonna be a, a system that operates properly and they won't have to maintain it long-term, and then you won't get this broken-up asphalt condition. That does lead to sediment in the, in the down gradient system, so we'll be avoiding that with the, with the new design or the upgrades.
Since this abouts a residential neighborhood in West Haven, could somebody give testimony as to how the operations run, hours of operation? You know, I mean, this type of terminal is often, one side's for incoming freight, and the others for the, then they move it across the dock and ship it out.
Yeah, you have that in your, the five, page six of your application.
Right, but if someone's coming over road from out in the Midwest, and they show up at two in the morning, they're gonna park there until it opens up in the morning, the facility's not open, but a truck can probably come in, no?
So if you're gonna give it.
Oh, we do have to have you.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, when he's done, no, when he's done, sorry.
You know, operational questions Diane, Diane can ask your answer for you, but any of the, anything with the building is Eric, and operations is Diane, and I can answer the engineering drainage stuff.
They do say in their application that almost all traffic, all trailer traffic takes place Monday through Friday, eight to ten AM and five to seven PM. Average daily tractor trailer arrivals is nineteen, average daily tractor trailer departures is nineteen.
And so, basically, we're gonna double that in phase two? If we're doubling the docks?
No, that.
I, he had testimony before, cause I asked him that question, and he said that he was, they expect it to be the same in relative terms, from where it is in fifty-six now to what it is. Am I saying that correctly?
Correct, correct, there might, there, with adding the loading docks for phase two, you would probably see some increase in traffic, we did not do a traffic study, but if it goes from nineteen to, even goes to thirty trucks in the morning and the afternoon, that's not gonna have any significant negative impact on the, the surrounding area.
I think you said it at the beginning, it was a trucking terminal, it's gonna be a trucking terminal, just new.
Yeah, but, but it sounds like the, the traffic is confined in a couple hours in the morning, a couple hours in the evening, late afternoon.
Okay, well, we'll let them, if I, I'd like to hear it again, please, sorry.
Okay, Diane, can you come up and just expand a little bit?
Hello, hello Diane Allard.
Introduce yourself for the record, please.
Diane Allard, Service Center Manager, ABF Freight.
Could you spell your last name, please?
A-L-L-A-R-D.
Thank you.
And Diane's D-I-A-N-E, one N?
Thank you.
No A, okay, um, okay, so, with the nineteen trucks coming in, there is a couple road drivers that do come in, so they will typically come in like one in the morning, but they just leave the trucks and they go. So it's like, they're there for like fifteen minutes, they leave, they go, and then the rest of the majority, the, the timeframe in the morning and at night that they're referencing, is the majority when the guys go out on the street and come back. There are guys throughout the day, once in a while, you know, varies, but depends on freight flow, like sometimes the freight comes in late, you know, stuff like that, so it's, it's not excessive by any, it's not like a huge, I guess what we call it, DC, you know what I mean, it's just a, end of the line terminals, what we call it.
Okay, so, could you just explain sort of the difference between, you're an end of the line terminal, so you're delivering to customers?
Yes.
After receiving from somewhere else?
Yes, Carlisle, Pennsylvania, so Carlisle, Pennsylvania is our main hub, that the road drivers will bring the freight in, and, you know, like I said, like, there'll be like, one guy comes in like one o'clock in the morning, then there's another guy comes in at five, that's the freight that we work and goes out on the street to, you know, everybody in Orange, and we go up to Berlin and stuff like that.
Right now, that, that. One in the morning person is onsite when they come, with the, when they deliver it, in other words?
They're there for about fifteen minutes, they come, they bring trailers in and they leave.
On fifty-six's property?
Yes.
Okay, and you expect that would be, instead of fifty-six, it would just be on sixty-two?
Correct. Yep, I've never, so I've been manager there five years, I've been with ABF thirty as supervisor and so forth, and we really never had any complaints from any residentials, like, you know, like, I've got residentials, like where we might be out in, like other towns, and they'll say, hey, your truck driver's driving through here, where I'm going with that is like, in Orange, no one's ever complained about us being there, that I'm aware.
I do have to say, I, I don't live far from there, and I've never noticed any excessive traffic at all.
And I don't live far from Tommy, so I can say the same. So can you speak to, how do you think, if at all, the operation will change, once the phase two building is up, and you maybe go from nineteen to thirty trucks a day?
I hope we go to thirty trucks, that'd be a lot of increase in business, so obviously we're always looking to increase, the additional doors would be, give us room to expand, we're a little tight right now, is what it is, so we are looking just to improve with what we currently handle, right? And then obviously, we're always hoping for growth, so, I mean, but it's not, yeah, like, I mean, what's the most, it's gonna be some more drivers, five drivers, you know, stuff like that, so I don't think it would be anything that's gonna be major impact on anything, you know. Anything else?
It's a permitted use.
I could talk about ABF all night, so if you want. Alright.
Although, the landscaping is world's better.
Yep.
And, and so is the, I mean, it's gonna be almost eighteen thousand square feet less impervious.
Yeah, exactly, I think the advantage, I, I think it's a win-win for both the, the town and ABF, in that, that ABF's gonna have a nice facility that they can operate from now, and they're not gonna be as cramped, and number two, if, if we didn't have to come for the site plan approval, like I say, it's an existing trucking facility, so another operator could move in there tomorrow and leave everything as is, not touch the drainage, just, you know, move their business in and start operating, but this is a significant improvement to the property.
And the buffering, you know, the residential with the trees is a nice addition.
Yeah. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the parking along that rear line would be not for trucks, it looks like a normal vehicle, it wouldn't be for.
No, it's for tractors.
Those are tractor cabs, yeah, yep.
What pulls the trailers?
But those are Berviti and those, the green giants and the Norway spruce are gonna be planted at eight feet, and those things grow a foot or two a year, you know, it's gonna be significant screen.
You might just correct this. On, on the, I'm looking at the application.
Yeah.
In, on the checklist for site plan review, item nine, I, I don't know why that would be not applicable, if more than four hundred cubic yards of earth materials are to be disturbed, has a special use permit application to submit it up. Am I missing something?
That's the special, that's the temporary special permit that we're reviewing today.
That's part of it.
That would be part of it, so it probably should've just been checked off, instead of, instead of NA.
Yeah. That's what I'm, you know, really important, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something there.
This one. I have it right here, if you wanna, I know this is right. These are antiques, yep.
What do you have?
She was asking which packet was the architecturals.
I didn't see them in the, the smaller.
Yeah, they were the second large package.
Yeah.
Yes. I have these, if you wanna take a look at mine.
Do you have, do you have those? Have the elevations, do you?
Have the building elevations from Claris on the board, so. Okay, that other set, these are there, so, A, A two oh one is the existing building elevations, so you have the office and all the existing loading docks, okay, and then this is the back, so this is the.
East elevation, south elevation and west elevation.
So.
So east elevation faces the residential?
Correct, you'd be standing in the parking area where the residential is, looking at the building.
Right, okay.
Correct, and the addition would go off of this north side.
So the, north is, is down on that map? Oh, well, this one. Well, the residential, the residential area in West Haven is, is to the top of that map. I'm having trouble following it, let me see here, if we're, this is east.
Not the top of it, that doesn't make sense, no, not the top of it.
It's behind you.
Behind it, behind it.
If I'm standing here looking, if I'm looking at the building.
Behind it, that's what I mean.
Right, if I'm looking at the building, they're back here.
Right, alright, yeah, yeah.
And then.
This is the proposed additions, you see the existing building ends here, and it's just an extension of additional docks in this case, so you're under. So the existing, at sixty-two Carlson now, there's thirty-six bays, there's thirty on the building that we're gonna keep, and there's six on the building that are coming down, okay, so there's thirty-six now, with the addition, so tear down the building, put on the addition, there'll be fifty-eight total. So you're basically adding fourteen on each side.
What is the composition of the building?
Uh, it's cinder block?
Yeah, steel frame and masonry.
Steel frame and masonry.
The major architectural element is the roll-up door. By volume.
So that, that's all I have, if you have any other questions, certainly be happy to, to answer them.
I don't think I do, anybody else?
Check with the audience?
I will.
The architect gave you stuff.
What's that?
It's on the architect page, you should have answered it.
Alright.
Well, what's a roll-up door?
He told me, he told me buy me a beer afterwards, if he didn't have to answer anything.
He got out of here by sort of.
He's so close.
Alright, let me ask, are there any, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak with respect to this application? Okay, it sounds like that's a no, alright, Jack, again, we have all the sign offs we need.
We do, yes.
And I, I thought, wasn't there one sign off that came with some conditions on it, I didn't, but I don't remember seeing the conditions.
You might be referring to Bob's memo, which I believe was covering the West Haven.
Yeah, Bob's memo, his condition was C, his, his notes, and one was, there was a couple of ticky tack items, he wanted a nine inch curb instead of a six inch concrete curb on the south side to make sure the drainage stays in the system, and then he wanted another copy of the drainage calcs, and he wanted the West Haven Engineers' sign off. Subsequent to that, he emailed you that those comments were addressed, once, once the West Haven Engineering Department signed off, he said he was satisfied, and he sent Jack an email stating as such.
So was there a revised plan that, that addressed his?
Yeah, that's the plan that's before you, we did that before applying.
Alright.
Right.
Yep.
Alright, so we've captured his, his comments on the plan, okay. Alright, alright, very good, thank you, thank you. Alright, so we have no comment from the public, I think, I'm not sure we need any further information from outside of this room to decide the application, so if someone's prepared to move that we close the public hearing, that would be good?
So moved.
Alright, we need a second. Second, alright, Commissioner Tarrant seconds the motion to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Alrighty. Well, it looks like a big improvement, I mean, in a, in a lot of different ways.
Both the applicant end for the town.
Yeah, I mean, the landscaping, the site drainage, the impervious.
Reduction in impervious.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of positive attributes to the, the project.
And I'd like to compliment you, Jack, on noticing that putting a evergreen buffer along the property line with the adjoining residential could only help, you know, any noise intrusion into their lives, even though we're basically moving, and, you know, they live next to an impact that's been there for over forty years, and it moved one house, or one building over.
Right.
It's still, you know, hopefully nets out positively.
It'd be much better than it was.
I would think that it would be, be some, there'd be some improvement.
I would think so.
Right.
It's pretty dilapidated as it sits today.
Yeah, and the, and fifty-six is so crowded, you have to get onto Carlson to change your mind.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And, and not much better aesthetically.
No.
Right.
That's for sure.
Maybe someday they'll acquire fifty-six and.
Try.
We'll try again sometime.
Yeah, but there's a, there's a twenty-foot grade change, but was it twenty-foot?
Yes, that was.
Ten or twenty.
It's significant.
Yeah, you're not, you're, you're not gonna interlink the two.
Right, so they're gonna be always two separate areas.
Yeah. Or a lot of dirt.
Yeah, or someone gets ambitious, yeah.
Alright, so we have two applications, actually, the site plan application and the application for temporary special use, earth material removal and filling, I guess we need a, we need a motion on each of those.
Do we need findings, also for special use?
Yeah.
Just a reminder, we will need a bond for this as well, so that should be included.
So.
How do we determine the bond?
By price of the improvements, so cost of the project plus ten percent on top.
Sounds like a Jack issue.
A tough one there.
Sure does, yes. Correct.
He's just saying our approval ought to be subject.
Right, right, it should be included, so I can ask for that.
Wanted to make sure I didn't have to figure it out.
And all the conditions for the S and E, inert materials removal?
Yes.
Hours of operation, S and E controls in place.
I think those are all.
All shown.
They're all shown in the plan.
Alright, and we have testimony on the hours of operation, so if we start getting calls, because at four o'clock in the morning, they're idling, you know, six trucks on the, whatever, go, hey, guys.
So, it sounds to me like the, although they would be happy with additional business, it, it sounds like it will be incremental over a period of time, that at least for right now, it'll be similar to what they have, just in a different, you know, different location.
Well, an end of the line, I didn't understand the difference between, and then this being an end of the line terminal, and the ones I'm used to are basically twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, there's someone coming in one side, there's people going out the other side, it's like, you know, FedEx.
FedEx.
Right, this isn't that, this is receiving freight from a, from one of those places, breaking it out for deliveries, so, it's a little, much less intense. And then, you know, again, in the POC day, we're supposed to repurpose, you know, old buildings, permitted use.
It's, it's nice to, you know, for a change, we're getting an application in the light industrial.
For light industrial?
For an actual use, use is permitted. Usually we have to, we start with a change in the regulations, then we go from there, so, that I think is, that, though, that jumped out at me right in.
Yeah, no, you're right, you were right.
We're getting, getting an actual light industrial use. Alright, is there any, any, I mean, findings as far as, you know, you know, special use permit type findings, again, you know, this harmonious with the neighborhood, with the, with the uses, other uses permitted in that zone, no reason to believe it has the. No reason to believe it has the effect of diminishing property values, or increasing traffic, or noise, or any of those type of things, so. I think it's probably exactly the kind of project we'd like to have, you know, and would be very happy with, and light industrial, light industrial one zone.
I'll move that we, you ready for motion? Okay, I'll move that we, and we'll do them separately?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make motion that we approve the application for a site plan review submitted by ABF Freight Systems, Inc., for the property number 62 Carlson Road, to improve the current developed site to operate another trucking business. The application is predicated on its compliance with, and I believe it meets the, the special permit requirements. I don't remember all of them, but it's, it is harmonious with the rest of that neighborhood, which is clearly a commercial neighborhood. It improves the site, it is certainly an enhancement of property values, not a detraction. What else can I say, it also meets with the, the purpose of the P O C D, and that, as Kevin brought out, it's. What did you, what had you said? The.
Well, it's.
Repurposing.
Purposing, you know, existing buildings to new.
New and better, and it's improvements, especially in light of the, the. Not only the architectural and enhancing the new buildings, but also because of the.
Water quality.
The water quality, and also the, what is it, the, the trees that they're going to be planting.
Green strips.
The landscaping.
Yeah, landscaping.
And we'll be subject to a bond.
And we'll be subject to a bond, damn, okay.
All right, so we, we have a motion to approve the, well, that was actually meant for the site plan and for the.
It could be both, it's.
You could.
Yeah.
I don't see why not. All right, then I'll amend the motion.
To include the application, the approval for the application of temporary special use, earth materials removal and filling.
All right, so we have, we have a motion to approve the site plan and the application for temporary special use, earth materials removal and filling, subject to the conditions that Paul mentioned. And, and supported by the, the, the things he, he talked about as far as consistency with the plan of conservation and development and special use permit requirements, do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
It's been seconded, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Unanimous.
All right, good luck with the project.
We're bothering with questions on the way out.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Can I see my agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Heavy lifting to get it. All right, last item on the agenda, item number seven, is a petition to amend the orange zoning regulations. This has been submitted on the Planning and Zoning Commission's own initiative, and it's to amend section 383-26 of the orange zoning regulations to regulate solar and other renewable energy structures in the residential zone. Do we, I guess we did read the wiggle notice on this.
We read it in with the first one, if you want to do it again, go ahead, but I don't think we need to.
All right, the public hearing's been, been opened. So I, I, I looked at what I had in my file and what you had included in the package, Jack, was what I understood to be the.
I think that was our final consensus for language that we felt comfortable with, we kicked it around for a couple of weeks. Just to make sure that we had any area of the yard covered that, you know, you'd, you'd see by car. You know, it would be reasonable to assume that any renewable solar field, or when, you know, whatever renewable energy structure you are looking to install would be located in the rear of the property out of.
Ground mounted.
Ground mounted, yes, ground mounted. Which would be fairly reasonable for a residential zone, if you ask me, and I think that was our consensus, so. Anyone has any other adjustments or anything like that?
I'm in agreement with the language, I think it accomplishes, I mean, I think one thing it makes clear is that we consider energy conservation structures and buildings to be accessory.
Correct.
Accessory in the residential zone, so permitted. And we show a preference for having them not in the front yard.
Correct.
So that's the, the change, the first one was the section I, two, and the second one, the section six.
Did we say we were including the ground-mounted solar as part of the lot coverage?
It would be, because it's an accessory structure, yeah, we, right, it's just like a garage or a shed.
Or a swimming pool, or.
Yeah.
Cabana, or whatever.
So if, and if they're, because it's an accessory structure, you have a 300-square-foot maximum before it would be a special permit, or a 15-foot in height maximum. So if they were going to exceed either of those, they got to come in front of us for 15 feet in height, if you have a aggressive windmill or something there, yeah.
So, I mean, this, this wouldn't permit, for example, a, a solar farm.
It would not, no.
Because it wouldn't be used for the occupants of the dwelling and their guests.
It's not anywhere near as big as Kevin was describing.
Right.
That they would need in order to really run the house or anything.
Yeah, we don't specify where this energy goes, you can power your own house with it, or you can put it back into the grid and, and do it that way.
That's not what it said.
Yeah. Right.
It's, it's permitted, but only when such uses are for the personal.
Oh, okay, so it does, right. So, yes.
So, anybody who had in their mind, you know, on their 10-acre house parcel, that they were going to set up a, a solar farm.
Right.
And sell that electricity to the utility company, that won't work.
Correct.
But I, I don't know that Connecticut, utility companies have to buy your net above your personal.
Yeah, I mean, they may, whatever, I mean, if.
Well, we don't regulate commercial solar farms, that's the Siding Council.
Yeah.
Correct, anything over one megawatt goes to the Siding Council.
Right.
Right, but from a zoning perspective, we wouldn't, we're not allowing that in the residential zone. What do you, I'm not sure I follow you.
Well, it's not regulated by us, in other words.
If somebody wanted to do a solar farm, three megawatts, and they had a lot of acreage.
Yeah.
That's not our call, that goes to the Siding Council, and we don't, we don't regulate that locally.
Basically goes around any municipal approvals needed.
All right.
This is, this is for the residential.
Right, but this is much as we can do, it's 99.99%.
Anything that would qualify to go in front of the Siding Council would far exceed our accessory structure regulations. It would be way bigger than 300 square feet.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, so that would have to go to special permit anyways.
But that's why I mentioned, you know, if it were a huge lot.
Right.
Would the Siding Council over, we wouldn't have any jurisdiction over the Siding Council.
Correct, we could give them a recommendation that they'll promptly throw in the trash, but yeah.
All right, well, like I said, I'm, I'm satisfied with this language, and prepare to move, move ahead with it.
Close the public hearing, ask if anyone has any.
Yeah.
Comments?
Yes.
My name is George Ekman, 365 Demarest Drive. I'm actually here to.
Can you spell your last name, please?
Oh, yes, E K M A N.
Thank you.
I'm actually here to support this. And the reason I'm here is.
That's nice.
Yeah, I, I've been involved in some solar stuff in another piece of property in a different town. I've learned an awful lot more about solar than I ever wanted to know, and this is really more concerning with the fact that solar can get overbuilt, and some of the potential liabilities that can be created when solar installations go in. It sounds like this isn't necessarily the board to go before, in terms of large pieces of, attract like the Treat Farm. But, you know, there is a very significant disposal problem when it comes to solar panels. 25, 30-year life, am I telling you everything you already know? Oh. The National Renewable Energy Laboratories, NREL.gov, estimates that it's $368,000 per megawatt for decommissioning costs on a, you know, a large site. So the Treat Farm, for instance, should have a reserve of at least $1.1 million to protect the town, because if, if that site, that for whatever reason, they don't have what it takes to decommission it, it's the town's responsibility, no, it'd be the owner's responsibility. If they can't do it, it's the town's responsibility, and there is a huge potential liability there. Also, what there are lithium batteries associated with it, big fire issue. Typically, they just let the things burn out, but if fire department doesn't know how to handle it, you can end up with toxic waste into the ground, a lot of these panels do have toxic materials in them, and heavy metals can, can enter into the groundwater and contaminate. So, actually, the importance to, to the town is even if this does go to, I assume that's a state agency, to, to very strongly recommend decommissioning, you know, a reserve for decommissioning costs, and something that's consistent with the NREL recommendations, and that that reserve, you know, be substantial, as in not just a bond, but cash associated with it, to make sure that whatever company is doing this and is going to be responsible has the financial means to be able to, number one, guarantee that when this thing is being built, that, you know, they have a bond just for assurance that it will be built properly, and then 30 years from now, make sure that when the decommissioning time comes, they don't leave the town holding a bag. So anyway, this, this is much more in a residential situation.
That's good information, but, but not really applicable to.
Not, not to this application, but in support of making sure that this is, as I say, just for residential use for the particular parties involved. Quite honestly, if it were my next-door neighbor, I'd hate to see something out in the backyard where I have to start looking at somebody's panels, that, that to me would be objectionable, and maybe something that would at least require adequate screening, so that let's face it, they're ugly.
Yeah.
And I look at some in, in another town, and it's, it's really something that, you know, I'm I'm supportive of green energy in general, but some of these things, you know, they, they present, you know, visual pollution and ecologically dead zones, both of which are certainly issues, and I wouldn't want one in my next-door neighbor's yard that I have to look at.
Give us some authority, I mean, we're allowing them in a relatively small area, and if they're going to be any larger than that, they have to come before the commission, and we'll have some control over where it's sited, and maybe even some diffusing methods.
So anyway, I applaud you for taking, you know, this stance, and also thank you for your service to the town in this regard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That's a good point, I mean, if the county is ultimately responsible. We have no regulatory authority over a.
Over a large enough.
Over a large project in a, in a residential zone, seems odd.
We do not. They'll have to send us notices, but it's just a heads up, it's not a, what do you think?
Okay, well, I guess that's for another day. All right, so if, if anybody else in the audience, okay. Then a motion to close the public hearing, unless we think we need more information.
So moved?
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I mean, I think we pretty much beat this to death, as is our habit. I'm, like I said, I'm comfortable with the language, I think it accomplishes some, some positive.
Better than ours.
Right, so, anybody prepared to?
We could do an effective date of May 23rd, if we are so inclined, which is a week from today.
Well, I'll move that we amend on our own initiative, apparently, section 383-26.
What great initiative.
Yeah. Section I, two, as shown on our handout, and also I, six, as shown on our handout, with an effective date of May 23rd, 2023.
You'll give us replacement pages for our.
Probably got to do a lot of.
Backwards.
Oh, yes, we'll be talking in a second.
Sure.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the change in our regulations, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, that takes care of our agenda for tonight.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned at 8:27, thank you.